Thank you. We're here this afternoon with our joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners and our Environmental Affairs Committee. This is an annual event, and I really appreciate everybody coming. First of all, Frank leave already? No, I came back. Frank, you want to just?
Commissioner, Commissioner, you have the first, you have an item first from Public Works on the two of them.
Okay, this is the Krimgold Beaver mitigation. All right. And what do we have? Maureen, I guess this is yours.
Yes, I'll start it off. Commissioners, good afternoon, and we were with you previously to talk about Phase One of the beaver mitigation at Krimgold Park, and that is now in its final stage, and we are working on Phase Two. Your facility solicited, solicited quotes to supply and install four Clemson devices at Krimgold Park at each pond's overflow pipe, and we are requesting your approval to award this project to White Pine Construction in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred and four dollars. This cost includes all labor, material, and equipment. And if you have questions about the project's Excel, there's Justin's here and Brad Weigert is here.
All right. Thank you very much. This, this is a real controversial issue. It's right up the street from me in my district. So any elaboration or explanation what this does, and that it's not to harm the beavers, would be greatly appreciated.
Sure, absolutely, Commissioner. I'm going to turn this over to Facilities Manager Brad, and he will fill you in on the script of work and how this is going to help the situation down there.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I can elaborate a little bit on what we're doing. We're here today for a decision of installing said Clemson devices in the four ponds. Basically, the Clemson beaver devices are a diversionary tactic used to help deter the beavers from attempting to prohibit the flow of water through a designated area such as an outflow pipe. The device will allow water to flow through the outlet pipe without noise or the appearance of any current. The device will also not allow the beavers to physically see any water being discharged from the pond. This will effectively halt the beavers from damming since none of the variables to dam are longer present. The level, the levelers should provide the opportunity to live with the presence of beavers at Krimgold Park. While no beaver mitigation strategy is maintenance-free, Clemson devices offer a lower-quality maintenance mitigation option and provide for a longer-term solution for both the wildlife and the site function. And just to add a little bit to that, these levelers were in play from day one. We just had certain phases. The, the logging or the taking of the dead wood from Krimgold was Phase One, and now we're working into Phase Two, which is obviously installing these levelers. And what they are is a, it's a ten-inch pipe with a thousand little holes. And that, those holes allow the water to infiltrate slower and thus much less noise, and slower meaning current as well. Then the original outflow, outflow pipes that we are dealing with now, they'll be covered. So there will essentially be no noise and no current, and we're still letting the water exit the ponds when need be, when the level gets high enough. But this is a way that we can live with the beavers at Krimgold Park and fix the problems that we have with the four ponds. So we think it's definitely the best way to, to go about trying to help everyone in this situation.
Mr. Weiger, thank you very much. It's my understanding that the noise issue is beavers instinctively want to clog the drain or something, as if they think their, their dam is leaking. Is that true?
They do, and when the pond gets to a certain level, the outflow pipes, they obviously collect the water. Well, it's like a four-foot hole, and the water falls down the outlet pipe, thus making the noise. So if we cover the outlet pipe and divert the inflow twenty feet out underwater, that takes away any noise and any, any current that may be, that may be happening with the four-foot in-outflow pipe. So it's like a, it's a diversionary tactic. We're still leaving the water out of the pond, but the beavers don't know it's leaving. There's a lot of fencing. There's a lot of fencing around the pipes. There's fencing around the outflow. You know, it's, it's, it's one of the better mitigation options out there for us to be able to utilize effectively.
Is this a new mitigation technology, or has it been around a while? Does it have a track record of being effective?
Uh, yeah, it's been around since the early nineties. I believe the University of Minnesota came up with it. It's not a patented or copyrighted thing. It's kind of just gone throughout the universities. And I was reading this morning, there's been about four years, the first four years, they had trials and errors on them and experiments, and they pretty much got them to the point where they feel it is the most effective way to live with beavers.
Then they work the bugs out of it. Now, all I ask is that when they start doing the construction project on this, it's right up the street from me. Mr. McGowan knows where I'm going with this. I'd love to go there and see it in action. I want to take some photos, get some film of it, because it really helps for priority Carroll to get my constituents to visualize what's going on and give them a greater understanding. So please, Mr. McGowan, contact my administrative assistant, Ms. Dietrich, when you have a time schedule, and we'll plug it in. And with that, I move that the Board of Commissioners award this project for installation of the Clemson devices at Krimgold Park in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred and four dollars.
For a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and second that we move with, move on with the beaver mitigation. All in favor? All right, that's four in favor. So good luck with your mitigation of the beavers, and let me know how it goes on, how this goes on. It'd be nice to have a view of this in about a year, see if they've changed their habits at all.
We hope.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, maybe we'll, we'll go back and move on to Environmental Advisory Council. This is our annual meeting, update meeting, and she, Craig's on board. Brenda, welcome. People coming on. Okay, how about Frank, you want to introduce members of the council? I guess not. Okay. Brenda, yeah, okay, yes, go around. Brenda, you want to take care of that?
Sure, Commissioners. I'm going to ask each of the Environmental Advisory Council members to just give a quick introduction to who they are, just so that we can refresh everybody's memory, since we just do this once a year. Frank, if you could start, we'd appreciate that, and then come back to me at the end of it. And if he's having trouble with his mic, maybe Craig could start.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Craig Pasguski, Vice Chair of the EAC, been on the board for these four years now. Recently moved from Finksburg, Commissioner Weaver's District, to New Windsor, near Frank. Been involved in numerous environmental activities over the years in the county. So looking forward to another year. Hopefully, it'll be, hopefully, we can meet in person at some point this year, too.
Thank you. Curtis, you with us?
Yeah, good afternoon. My, my image is frozen. I have a camera issue, but I'm moving. My name's Kirk Barrett, and I'm a member of the EAC, been a member of the committee now, pushing, getting close to eight years, actually. Hydrologist, live in Westminster, involved in a number of the activities. I think it's a very progressive and accomplishing committee, and we look forward to working with you in the next year. Thanks.
Okay, Kathleen, Charlene, anybody here?
Good afternoon. My name is Charlene Norris. I've been a member of the Carroll County EAC for a little bit over three years. I've been a resident of Eldersburg, Maryland for over twenty-two years, and I'm an engineer.
Good. Frank, we're not, not picking up on it. Kathleen?
Hi, you can, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Um, so Kathleen Anthony, I think come February will be a year with the EAC. So I'm the newest member to my knowledge, born and raised in New Windsor, spent a couple of years in New York and Colorado for, for college and whatnot, and I currently work seasonally for Maryland State Parks. So it's been, it's been fun to kind of learn what this board does and, and all the things it can do.
And last, Curtis, are you with us?
And we already, we already heard from Curtis. Yeah, we need to hear from Frank, but now I think he's gone, isn't he?
Yeah.
Now he's coming back.
There he is.
If we can't hear, having a mic issue, let's have him just call in.
Yeah, either that or did he check his gear wheel?
All right, I'm back. I think I'm good.
Yep, yeah, yay.
I was, I was moving my computer so I didn't have this glare on the back of my head here and suddenly gone. So anyway, should I get started from the get-go here, Brenda?
Would you like to introduce yourself first, and then you can turn it back to me to talk about the meeting?
Absolutely. I'm Frank Black, Chair of the EAC and computer guru, obviously not. Been Chair of the EAC here for, take a little over two years, not sure, somewhere around that area. I'd like to thank you gentlemen for giving us time on your agenda here today. A little bit of my background, I'm owner of Wakefield Valley Nursery in New Windsor, garden center and landscaping company, do a lot with native plants as well. Like I said, appreciate you having us, and I'll turn it back over to Brenda then.
Well, Brenda, get started. This, this committee is dear to me. I served six years on the EAC years ago. And as an advisory group to the Commissioners, I think we made quite an impact back then as, as you are today. And I'm going to highlight some of your things later, but Brenda, I'm going to let you go ahead with everything from now.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to give you a quick sort of background on the purpose of the meeting. For those, I'm sure you're aware, but there may be other members of the public who aren't aware that, you know, the Environmental Advisory Council meets with the Board of County Commissioners in a joint meeting every year. And in that meeting, we review the 2020 annual, well, in this case, the 2020 annual report. And the Code, Chapter Thirty-One, requires the EAC to report to you annually, and so this serves as that reporting. And we also review with you the proposed projects in the work plan for the calendar year. So you should have in the packet that you receive a little agenda for this portion of your meeting, as well as a copy of the 2020 annual report and the EAC's proposed 2021 work plan, which we'll review the projects with you, and after reviewing those, have some discussion with you. And then if there's any other projects, we can talk about that, and ultimately, they would like to have your conference on a proposed work plan to move forward. So that's about it from my introduction. I'm going to turn it over to Frank, and Frank will review briefly with you what is in the annual report.
Okay, thanks, Brandon. Once again, I'd like to, as I always say, Brenda does a fantastic job helping us at this committee, and kudos to her. We couldn't be able to do the great work we do without her. So I'll get right into it here. I'll brief you on the 2020 annual report, which you should have in front of you there. As Brenda said, the report is annually given to you guys per Chapter Thirty-One of the code. I'll try to be brief with this to allow any questions you all may have, either during or after I give the briefing here. The first thing we completed was the public outreach piece on the expanded polystyrene and your business. Twenty nineteen, the General Assembly passed M Bill One-O-Nine prohibiting certain EPS products. And at the board's request, we developed a one-page fact sheet to help businesses get through this and to comply with it. The Carroll County Health Department enforces it. And that project, I believe, was backed up several months due to the COVID, but it is in effect now. We finalized that in September of 2020, and it was posted on our webpage. The second thing we took care of here in 2020, basically two things, our environmental awards, which we present biannually. We basically, our committee basically rebranded the whole program. The last time in 2018, we had very few nominees for projects done for environmental projects throughout the county. So we figured it was time to look at this and refocus and rebrand it. We skipped last year, and the awards will be, the name has been changed to the Environmental Action Awards, and they will be presented in 2021, and we'll still go biannually every two years with those. Basically, the purpose of the awards are to invigorate the process and increase significance of the award for environmental projects done in the county. Like I said before, we changed the name, branded the program with a new logo. We restructured the awards categories. We used to have five. We narrowed them down to three. We developed a new nomination guideline and eligibility criteria. And we also have a venue for the awards presentation to be coordinated with another environmental event in Carroll County in April. Basically, we've also secured donations for award winners. The positive practices and educational outreach categories in this. We've solicited seventy-five dollars of gift cards to Salerno's Restaurant. And the Student Engagement Award, we've been able to secure a five-hundred-hour scholarship from Atlantic Blue Water Services for the student winner, plus a twenty-five-dollar Olive Garden gift card. So we know everybody's got to eat, so the gift cards are a nice little incentive to these award winners here. Basically, all the behind-the-scenes work was done, and the rollout of the campaign was in early January. As of our last meeting last week, I believe we already had several nominations that have come in. So hopefully, we're off to a good start as far as the awards this year are concerned. Couple other things we did. It was, it was a trying year, obviously, with the virtual meetings, but it's been the case with everybody. So we also had residential gray water on our agenda. That was basically on our agenda every meeting we had. Nothing was basically worked on or done on that. We're still waiting for the state of Maryland to develop their regulations as to what they expect with this, and, and it is on our work plan if that comes up for 2021. as to what they expect with this. And, and it is on our work plan if that comes up for 2021. Couple other things in addition, kind of ongoing work. We provided feedback on the initial concept for the community solar zoning text amendment for the county. We also had an ad hoc committee formed with three members of the EAC to heal and to hear an appeal related to the forest conservation code. And we completed our 2021 work plan, which you'll be briefed on shortly here about that. And concluded and prepared our 2020 annual report, which I've just given you here. Other than that, members Charlene Norris and Jesse Drummond were reappointed to their first full term starting in February of 2020. We have a new member on board, Kathleen Anthony. She was appointed in February of last year. And I myself was reappointed to my second term as Chair in December of 2020. Currently, it's nice to say we have no vacancies on the EAC. So I don't, it's been a while since we've been able to see that, say that, but we're thankful for that because it's always nice to have a full docket of nine members on the committee. That basically wraps up the annual report. If you have any questions, go ahead.
Chairman Barrett, thank you for that report. You and or your business is in my district, District 4 of New Windsor, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Since I love doing these priority carols, I was wondering if in the future, if you have any projects you want me to meet up with you and go get some video or photos of, or even the award recipients at their projects. I don't know if there's any physical things we could take photos of. But I absolutely love to get these images of what you're doing out in front of the public. So they have a greater awareness of what you're doing. My administrative assistant is Kathy Dietrich. So you can think about over the next month or two, I don't know what your timeframe is and when all this stuff's actually being done. But if any of that timeframe, you thinking put something together that would be beneficial and I can go out with you and get some photos, please contact her and let her put it in my schedule. I want to give you guys publicity for what you're doing.
That sounds great. I thank you for that offer. Our awards ceremony is, and Brenda can probably tell you, I don't have the information in front of me directly, but it is, I believe sometime in mid-April. It's coordinated with the Bureau of one of the, one of the bureaus she's on, she, she's arranged it for that. I'll let Brenda fill you in all the details with that. But yeah, we would love to get video of that. I know last time Commissioner Weaver was at the awards ceremony and, and yeah, the more publicity we can get, the better.
And the spring is absolutely gorgeous time of the year with this COVID and people locked in. I think that'd be a good time to get that out there. By the way, you look like you have a halo on your head. So you're blessed. And Mr. Barrett, that frozen photo of you, if we put some mittens on you, you could pass for that Bernie Sanders photo floating around.
Any other questions, concerns, Dennis? No, no, Steve?
No, I'm good, good right now. Just thank you for all the work that you're doing. You guys do a great job. I, I've got a couple items I want to bring up for them to look at, but that's for later on. So I'm good right now, Commissioner Weaver. Thanks.
I do too.
Commissioner Weaver, let me mention, let's do what I mentioned. Thanks for the work. And the gray water thing really is disappointing. That, that legislation was passed in 2018 and you still haven't written regulations for it yet. Therefore, you can't move forward with it. It's so frustrating and I, and, and I, last time we met down in Mako, can't think of the Secretary for the Environment, his name slipped you right now, but I talked to him about that personally, about getting these regulations written and so forth. He gave some suggestions and still nothing, but it's very frustrating when something finally gets passed that could help out around Maryland. And you don't even write the regs for it. I know nothing you can do about that, but it's just, it's just very frustrating when stuff like that happens.
It's been The speed in which government work sometimes, we all understand that's frustrating.
Yeah. Yeah, that's Ben, that's, that's Ben Grumbles. Yeah. So I'm, I'm concerned about that as well. I, I think they were, I think they weren't prepared when it was passed to, to, I, I think MDE thought that it was not going to pass. So they're, they're sort of, they're, they're, they're sort of coming at it differently now. So I don't, I don't know. I'm, would like to see some uptick in, in activity there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I've asked Brenda, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I've asked Brenda if we should still keep the gray water on our agenda month to month. And she suggested we do because as soon as we take it off and don't discuss it, then, then that's when it'll be there. So we'll just keep it on as soon as something's able to be looked at, we'll be sure to be right on top of it.
Okay. I think everybody's in agreement on that to keep it on, on that. When it comes available, we'll be able to move on it. Let's move ahead to our, I guess, 2021 environmental issues. Where we're going. And I know you have some really good ones here coming up. So. Brenda?
Right. We have four projects that we hope to be able to get to on our agenda for 2021. One of the first ones is the updating of the environmental stewardship booklet, which you guys are probably familiar with. And that's chock full of information that the county does on environmental protection, particularly land preservation. So we'll be taking, coming through that and updating that. That's every other year that we, we do that. The other thing, second item is something that Frank kind of mentioned that we looked at in the fall and reviewed is the proposed community solar text amendment to the zoning. So we're prepared to do a booklet. Once you, if the board approves that, we're prepared to do a booklet and provide resources to the community and how that affects them, how they can take advantage of that. Another item is our resources doing.
I can interrupt for a second just a little bit. The, the, the idea with this public outreach piece is that, you know, we have a lot of different issues that could come up with this community solar zoning text amendment. And the thought was that the EAC could possibly put together some type of public outreach piece that would help explain the amendment to the public and what it, what it does and doesn't do. And that would be then concurrent or very shortly after you adopt something, if you did adopt something. So that, that's the idea behind that piece.
Can't hear you Weaver.
I, I did put Brenda on my radio address a month ago. And that was really good, I think, as far as some public outreach to get people aware. People aren't aware what this, how this is coming together at the present time. I know Foreign Bureau has opposed it the way it's coming together here and most of it's lack of understanding. I think at this time. So this needs a, it's going to need a lot of help once we get through the next phase. I guess the approval of this to get it pushed out there. Brenda, comments from you on this? You are very more, you're much more aware exactly where you are in the whole process here. So.
Yeah, we're, we already introduced the concepts to the planning commission. That was on January 19th. We have, we are scheduled to start reviewing the draft text amendment with the planning commission next week at their evening work session on February 3rd. Reason for that, of course, is that the state law requires that the planning commission review any text or map amendments to zoning and provide a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So we're beginning to start that process, or we're actually in the middle of that process now. And then when that concludes and they have a recommendation complete, they'll be forwarded to the board. And then we will come back to the board and look for direction from you on where to go from there in terms of do we schedule a public hearing or do you want it, what changes you might want before that happens. So that's, that's where we are in the process with that. Like I said, this project with the EAC would be sort of a companion item to help explain to the public what it's all about when it, you know, if it does proceed to being approved and adopted.
Okay. Any other comments on solar text amendment coming up there? There will be a lot of work to do once it gets passed. So only that's what I think. So, thank you. Frank, want to move on then?
Yeah, I think Craig still has a few more items to bring up here on the work plan. Go ahead Craig.
Yeah, just two more. And real quick, the third item is a fact sheet or resource guide for residents to help them with tree planting, some of the reasons behind tree planting, where they can find information about that. And that would be something we would put on our website and I suppose around the county. And the fourth item is that gray water that we're still waiting for the state to develop the regulations for. And you guys have discussed that a bit already. That's it.
I will tell you, the tree planting is a major here. And I think we, Steve, the legislation was for how many trees to be planted statewide was
Just, just Just five million, that's all.
Five million, okay. In, in the future, if that legislation goes through, that's a lot of trees. But I found that many people don't know about what kind of tree to plant in their environment. They have no clue what they're looking at in the type of tree, how, the size of this tree, you plant it for mature height, not the seedling size. And you've probably seen how many people planted a 60-foot tree five feet from the foundation of their house when it was a seedling. Perfect size and now all of a sudden it's huge and what do we deal with it? You know, the recommendations or how to go through the tree planting and type of tree to plant is critical here. So I hope we can get those out even more and dispensed everywhere because people have no clue, but timing is everything. They want to plant trees in the spring when they all get ambitious and want to go out and do the lawns or in the fall. But here again, we need to get the information. Now I think that's a great project to go with. I see people all the time planting something they shouldn't and in the wrong place. So and plus we have stream buffers and everything, other opportunities to plant trees.
Is bamboo is bamboo an invasive species and frowned upon or is that something positive people should plant?
That's invasive species. Once bamboo gets established, Craig, you probably deal with it more than anybody.
Yeah, a lot of the, the really tall bamboos is really nasty. There are some like Nandina bamboo versions that aren't quite as bad. You see them, you know, in, in garden beds and such. But bamboo is really tough to get out, get rid of.
Is, is there a list of like invasive tree species on a website or something for people as a reference to educate them as what to not plant? Do we have that out there for the public?
Yeah, the Maryland Department of Agriculture should have a list of invasive, invasive species that are banned and actually illegal in Maryland. And garden centers are required, if they're selling any of those type of plants, they have to have a actual warning label. It's an invasive species, the ones that aren't totally banned. Some of them are totally discouraged. And you have to have signage up that shows that there are native alternatives toward those. So yeah, I don't have the direct link or information, but should be able to find it from the Maryland Department of Agriculture.
Is that something is that something that we can include on their reference website or anything as a, a public announcement? You know, taken from what the state lists, the duplicate for local residents that go for, looking for resources that we have to let them know?
Maybe that's something we can incorporate in the tree planting guide and have it be a little more broad than just tree, tree planting resource sheet. Maybe we can incorporate invasives into that. That would be rather than having a second publication for that. You know, the list is not incredibly long, but I think that would be a good place to incorporate that, but it's a great idea.
That would be helpful because so often it's just a pure ignorance. People don't know. And next thing you know, they got bamboo running all over their yard, going into the neighbor's yard. So any type of education we have for our constituents would be helpful.
This is also a topic with the solar zoning coming up. You know, invasive species don't take over between the solar panels. And you know, that can be a mess once they put panels in, if they're not maintained and taken care of correctly. So these are all be topics we're going to have to address.
In your tree planting guide, are you going to have suggestions on where to plant trees? Thing that comes to mind is people that plant trees along between like sidewalks and curbs or streets and stuff like that. There are certain, what I would call street trees that are good and there are certain things that you're going to plant there, should never be there. Is that going to be in your planting guide as well? This would be recommended for this particular spot and this is not recommended for that kind of thing.
The, I'll answer that one, but what the EAC is actually proposing to put together here is more of a like back in front of one-page fact sheet, which will, there's a whole lot of materials out there already available. And what the EAC is going to do is put together sort of like a directory of where to find all these different types of information and links to that information rather than trying to, you know, duplicate information that's already out there. So it would be sort of a one-stop reference guide to where to find that kind of information.
That's a very good point because today with the technology, it's a different world than when we were kids, you know, looking things up. Now it's a matter of finding a reference and clicking a link. That's a good idea.
Hey.
All right.
Commissioner Weaver, well, where are we now with the agenda? Was that it for the work plan?
Yeah, I think that's your 21 plan. Now we want to, ideas from the commissioners for future plans or things we want to deal with. And Commissioner Lance, you already alluded to some, so may want to start off.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Weaver. And again, thank you guys for all that you're doing. You, you do an amazing job and it's, it's, it's important work. One of the things that I'd like to see you all focus on for 2021 and beyond, we are seeing an increasing amount of, of trash and all kinds of, of things along our roadways. I've myself have seen an uptick in emails from constituents. And just to give you an idea about that, I've got a, I've got some constituents up in, in, in some very rural areas in my district. And one gentleman shared with me that he and his wife go for walks every other weekend and put trash bags in their hands. And this is up in the Reinhardt Deep Run area. And every single time when they come back, they have at least three bags of trash that they're picking up on the roads. I will also tell you that I'm pretty sure there's a McDonald's somewhere in Pleasant Valley. I would, I would ask Mr. Bennett or Mr. Barrett to help me look for that because there's got to be one around there somewhere Curtis, because of the amount of Big Mac boxes and french fry and, and all that stuff that is in my yard constantly. And I'm sure you see it on Stone Road too Curtis, at, at our way. So.
I agree.
Yeah. So this is a huge issue. I know that, that there was a, that there was some, some things put together. Previously, I know that the State Highway Administration uses folks that are on work release from their detention center to do that along state highways. And I know that there were adopt a road programs that were put in place by the state highway that we have certain organizations in Carroll that still participate in, but some of them have been curtailed because of the safety issues because apparently on our backroads that are posted at 40 mile an hour, folks think on our backroads that are posted at 40 mile an hour, folks think they have to go 80. So it's kind of tough to get the safety aspect there too. But, you know, education, an educational push in our school system or, or education for just our citizens or something to, to try to deter people from throwing things out of their window. And, you know, recently I was talking to our county administrator, Roberta Wyndham, about this. And she suggested that maybe some of this comes out of our trash trucks too, as they're moving along. But I'd like to think that sporadically, the way I see it, that people are just attuned to throwing things out and, and it along the roadways. And it's, it's really becoming an issue. So I'd like the E A C to dive into that and come up with, you know, maybe push out some sort of, of public, you know, public information that folks can relate to, just reminding them not to do it. Maybe getting in our schools and telling folks of how bad it is to throw stuff out. You know, we, we had that thing where we had some of our municipalities doing the street sweeping to keep things out of our stormwater drains. And that, that too could be a part of it, but we are, again, I think this is a huge problem. And this is right in your, this is right in your wheelhouse, E A C, to, to really push out something on this. So I, I'll leave it at that. I think you all know, because you travel around here too, it's becoming a problem. So any, anything that you could do there, maybe try to increase the adopt a road program or, or again, educational opportunities. I don't know, but I would love to see you guys focus on that for the coming year.
Actually, you had one key component, education. If you start in elementary schools, you'd be surprised how those kids train their parents over the years. And if you start young, they get the, the habits formed and already, I mean, I've thrown things away. My granddaughter even says, you need, you need to have that recycled or whatever thrown away. Something I would even think about, have to wash it and recycle it. But they, the younger generation here is really on top of what needs to happen if we, if you give us some education on it. And that's a key component to anything to change the future, get started with the young kids. And we have Commissioner Rothstein back to now, so.
Yeah, it's all good. I appreciate the conversation. I mean, I'm used to, you know, back in the day, the crying Indian, you know, that was this very strong message. And we all remember that growing up was that crying Indian. Maybe we need, we kind of figure it out and come up with a very strong deliberate message, but it's already been said, so. Appreciate, I apologize for my tardiness. I was on a call with the state dealing with the vaccination process, so, but. I'll keep it going there, Commissioner Weaver.
Okay, Commissioner Lance, other things you have to bring up?
No, I think there are needs and, and we work pretty well together on this, but, you know, the continued effort of the, the proper way to recycle and don't throw it, anything at me, Commissioner Boucher. But, you know, I think we need to continue that effort in partnership with our, our, our folks in public works. But those were the two things, you know, just a reminder of how to properly recycle and what to properly recycle. And to do something with the trash that continues to be found along our roadways. There were, they were the two things that I had, Commissioner Weaver, thank you.
Well, I want to add on, I think Commissioner Wayne has made a really great point. I live on Woodbine Road and I have a McDonald's down the street, so I do occasionally have to pick up the McDonald's garbage off our front yard. And I was saying, maybe if there's something, the fact that children need volunteer hours to graduate high school and there's different community organizations that looking for things to do. If there's in any way your council could have, be like a hub on a website or something where these organizations can coordinate with one another, advocate for the children to get their community service hours, some place, some central location has a commonality to do this is that there's something you guys should look into to set that up possibly with the education of students and, and offering a network of volunteering for road crews and pickup and stuff.
Mr. Fraser, ideas for the future?
I have nothing to do right now. They could do a good job.
Mr. Rothstein, you have any ideas for the future of the E A C, need to look into?
I think just keep it simple, you know, just whatever you're doing, keep it simple so we can sustain it. If we try to do something too complex, it's good for a day, a week, a month or a year, but then it goes away by the wayside. And that's the problem with a lot of these projects. That's why that crying Indian, you know, sticks in my head. It was, it was a relatively very simple thing. He was standing by the side, somebody throws trash out there, he cries, that was it. It was a very straightforward message. So whatever we can do to help you, resource it, let us know. And, yeah, appreciate all you're doing. So that's kind of where I'm at.
And she's a great resource for this. She's fantastic to pull things together, so I will say that. I do have, I didn't, the trees, that is an issue I wanted to bring up, and I think Craig, you already addressed that one. Recycling is one that we're recycling solid waste we're battling with here and in our budget and everything else coming up. I'm sure we're going to have, the recycling, I guess, is our biggest issue. We used to make $15 a ton and now it costs us, what is it, Eric, $85 or $100 a ton to get rid of it. It is a major issue and what you are obligated to recycle, I think 37% of our trash. But it's, it's, it's a costly endeavor right now. And I'm not sure where we're going to head with it, what we're going to do with it, but, you know, ideas looking into recycling, how we could is really a major focus for a group. And I mean, that's a huge task to undertake, but at least just ideas to, as an advisory council, where should we be going as a county and looking into the recycling and hopefully this balances out sometime. But right now it's very costly and we, we don't have the answer internally. So might be a topic that we want to research over the next year or two years on this. Okay, from the committee.
A couple of things I'd like to add, I think they're very good points, and I think recycling and trash and the trash along the roadways kind of go hand in hand, and we will definitely look into that. I, I've noticed it as well. And maybe in our, in one of our upcoming meetings here, either February or March, we can get on the agenda and as a committee just brainstorm the who's, the whys, the wheres of where the trash is coming from. I think we could all probably ascertain a lot of that has to do with everybody's habits have been different the last year. More people at home, there's more trash, people just, I don't know, not doing what they're supposed to be doing. You can't legislate morality, you know, you're either going to throw trash out or you're not, and that's a hard thing to do. But Commissioner Lance, I think it is a great idea, we'll definitely look into it. You know, trash belongs either in recyclable containers or in the landfill, it doesn't belong along the side of the road. So, and definitely getting the education in the schools, because that's where it comes from. I think, you know, going back when we were all kids, you know, if I can look themselves in the mirror, and I'm sure they've thrown stuff out when they were kids. But, you know, you grow older and you realize that's not the proper thing to do and you don't do it anymore. So, you know, hate to point fingers, but probably a lot of it is coming from the younger population and we're also coming out of the trash trucks because they're, you know, overloaded with trash. So we as a committee will brainstorm that, see what we can come up with and, you know, maybe try to do something constructive where we can alleviate a lot of the ugliness along the side of the roads, which certainly is in Carroll County, so definitely work on that. Thank you, Commissioner Lance.
And the trash definitely doesn't belong in Commissioner Lance's front yard. He got threatened last year on this, so these subjects are always very touchy of people and they, they, they get a little bit irrational.
Yeah, well, that was a whole nother issue, but yeah, that's true. But thank you, Frank, I think that'll go a long way, even if it's just public service announcements to start out with, whatever. But I appreciate you focusing on that. And, and Curtis, when you get a chance, I'll stop by their neighbor and you and I can walk along and see if we can find that McDonald's out there. It's got to be out there somewhere.
Okay, anybody have anything for the good of the group here at this time, want to mention?
I just want to tell Stephen, anytime, come on by, we'll, we'll do that walk.
All right.
Chairman Black, I'm very much looking forward to doing some photos and tours with you. I'm an outdoors guy, fish hunt, hikes, or anything involving the outdoors, absolutely love, and I'm looking forward to doing it with you. Thank you.
Sounds good. I'll keep that in mind and I'll reach out. Thank you, Commissioner.
Brenda, you ready?
Is there, can I assume then, you know, you hate to assume, but why I'm asking, that you concur with the work plan that they've drafted plus looking into these additional products?
Sorry, you didn't come through clear.
Yeah.
Sorry, so can I assume that the board concurs with the work plan that they proposed and adding in, looking at these additional projects?
All in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Work plan? That's good, that's good.
Thank you so much.
So you, thank you, and as always, guys, I do want to say, you know, Brenda, special thanks. I know she does a great job of coordinating between the county and the work group, and she is tremendous in what she does. So we all think a lot of her, I know you guys do, so Brenda, thank you for what you do. And I guess that concludes our meeting for today. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Okay, we have that earlier.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion, motion made, second to adjourn, all in favor? Okay, this concludes our annual E A C commissioners meeting. Look forward to seeing you guys at the award ceremony in April, so take care.